Yeah, so everybody got one.
Was there a meeting for the get out?
Yeah, we got it. We got it. That's what we need to make.
It'll automatically, should automatically pop up. I would say.
Now, oh, yes, it just, it just popped up. You want me to vote?
No, they, they will select. They will select.
Good afternoon. The school board of the Duval County School District is now convened in a special meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. The Duval County School Board is here to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement and address other business items that require a vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. As a show of courtesy and respect to each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our comments from the audience portion of the board meeting, please note that we only accept the speaker cards up until 4:00 P.M. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. At this time, I ask that you join the board and our nation in a moment of silence for Santa Fe High School. Would you please stand? Thank you. Board members, I now invite you to stand for the opening message given today by retired pastor Ted Corley and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Would you join me as we pray? Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we come before you today in the name of your son, our Savior and our King, Yeshua HaMashiach, Jesus, our Messiah. Lord, this is a day that you have made and you have made it especially for Jacksonville and for the Duval County Public Schools. I thank you for the men and women who sit in the seats of the board. I thank you for their faithfulness to our children and to this city. I thank you, Lord, that you have spoken to each of them concerning each candidate and how they will vote today. I believe that they will make a good choice and I thank you that that will be an answer to prayer. We pray for a superintendent of integrity, courage, a passion for our children in Duval County. That the legacy that they will leave will be great and remembered always. I thank you for the gift of Dr. Willis as she has stood in the gap for us, as she has been encouraging, as she has been bold and strong and provided us with the kind of leadership we needed in this time. I thank you, Lord, that this will go quickly and smoothly and that our new superintendent will be on the job by July the first. I ask you to give wisdom and discernment and clarity. For your word says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart." Lean not unto your own understanding or the understanding of others. In all your ways acknowledge him and he will direct your path. I pray that for this board today in the great and glorious name of Yeshua, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now on the public comment portion of our agenda. Speaker cards were only accepted for this meeting until the published time to start this meeting. The school board welcomes your comments or matters that are before the board for consideration. It is not the board's intent to respond but to use the input in our deliberations. To give everyone appropriate respect and courtesy, please refrain from audible comments or applause. When you are called upon, please state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You will be notified when 30 seconds remain and when your time is up. If your comments exceed that time, you may present written comments to the board. You are asked to refrain from references to specific individuals. Please remember that speaker cards were only accepted until the published time to start this meeting. Thank you for taking your time to address the board. The first speaker is Tim Miller, followed by Elnora Atkins.
Good afternoon, my name is Tim Miller. Well, it's been a long journey since we started this about a year ago. But the decision the board will make today is probably one of the most important that you will make as a board member in Duval County. What is decided here will affect not only our school district but our city for many years to come as these students come through, graduate and become part of the city and part of the community. I want to take this opportunity to thank the board. It's, it's been a long process. You have kept the public informed and been as open and transparent as you could be and I greatly appreciate that. I also want to especially thank Chairman Wright and Vice Chair Hershey for really driving this to completion. I know it's been a monumental task, so I greatly appreciate it. And I'd also be remiss if we didn't thank Dr. Willis. You came in, jumped in, in the hot seat when we needed you and have done an extraordinary job. I talked to a lot of people around the community and everyone says you've done an incredible job and we wish you would stay. But I understand it was a, the deal was you'd come in until the new superintendent, so I appreciate your work, your dedication and your fulfilling that commitment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Elnora Atkins.
Good afternoon. My name is Elnora Atkins and I chair the Educational Committee for the Jacksonville Branch National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. Today, as a board collectively and as individual members, you will be making one of the most important governance decisions the school board can make. The selection of the next superintendent is critical as this school district continues on its quest to provide educational excellence for every student in every classroom throughout this district. Today, I would like to call your attention that this district is the 22nd largest school district in the nation according to student enrollment. We have over 10,000 employees and 168 schools in this district, not to mention a fiscal budget last year of over $1.6 billion. I urge you to look carefully at each finalist to assess his or her experiences as a superintendent, associate superintendent or assistant superintendent working in an urban school district. We need to see what Duval County is facing such as financial shortfall, low-performing schools, associate superintendents, declining enrollment, increase of charter schools, teacher shortage, et cetera. Our next superintendent needs to bring to the table leadership and organizational skills that will galvanize and energize all Duval County Public School employees, parents, students and the Jacksonville community to achieve world-class educational excellence. Your decision today will be a hallmark decision and one that is being watched by all Duval County Public School employees, parents, students, community supporters and the business community. Your decision will surely send a message to all of these constituencies that this board clearly recognized that we are a large urban school district and we will select a superintendent who is experienced working in that culture and one who has proven that he or she has been successful in leading a large educational entity like the Duval County School System. As I close, I would like to remind you and the incoming superintendent that this organization, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, is totally committed to work with the Duval County Public Schools to ensure that all students achieve and experience academic excellence every day in every classroom and in every school.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Approval of May 18th, 2018 agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the May 18th, 2018 agenda as submitted on May 16th, 2018. Is there a motion?
It's moved second.
The motion was moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Board Member Hash. Any discussion? Oh, that was her, okay. Hershey Couch, I'm sorry. Okay, so it was. Moved by Board Member Grimes and seconded by Board Member Couch. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for your vote. Board member Shine, we're waiting for you.
I don't have a vote screen. Something the new superintendent will surely fix. Problem with their voting machine. It is Florida.
Board member Shine, you can register a hand vote.
Yes.
By your actions, you have unanimously approved this item. The process for the superintendent search actually began on, officially on August 9th, 2017, when the Duval County School Board engaged in a discussion with the Center for Reform of School Systems to discuss a process to select a superintendent. On October 27th, a meeting occurred between Board Member Lauren Jones and I on behalf of the full school board to begin the request for proposal process to select a search firm. That search firm's mission was to find and recruit an experienced, student-centered, bold visionary leader to make a personal investment in our district, our community and most importantly, our students. Mission accomplished. I am delighted that the board's process now brings us to this day. At this time, I would like to introduce Ted Blazing and Brad Drager from Hazard, Young, Ateo and Associates to explain the process to select the candidate for superintendent.
Thank you, Chairperson Wright. The, a nine-month journey. And within the past week, since we were just here last Monday, since that time, you've spent a considerable amount of time right here with extensive interviews with the three finalists for the position. You've also made over 20 reference phone calls. You've received an investigative background report on each of the three finalists. It's time to move on and it's time to make decisions. So what we'd like to ask you to do this afternoon is for each of you to indicate your preferred candidate to us and why that person bubbled to the top after the interviews, after the applications, after the reference calling, background checks. What in your mind caused that particular candidate to be the preferred candidate? So with that, we will stop and we're anxious to hear from you. As I would imagine a lot of people are at this point.
Who would like to?
Why don't you start with? I've, I've been volunteered.
It does please me.
So as I was going through the entire process of this search, from receiving applications through the interview process, I reflected quite often on the meetings that we had with community members around a profile, around what was important to this district and certainly on, on my experience as a board member and my conversations with constituents. We talk quite a bit in, among ourselves as well as heard in those meetings with, with community that we have a lot of great things that are happening in our district now. We are in need of someone who can continue that great work, who can lead us forward, can isolate and look for challenges and, and improve in those areas as well. But we have an external environment to public education that is increasingly difficult. We have a legislative environment that has been, continues to, to place mandates on the school district that has been challenging in terms of funding. And we continue to need, as a district that's focused on educational achievement but also the holistic well-being of our children, partnerships in order to deliver on all of the needs that our students have. So, long lead-in. But I, I reflected on all of these things as I thought about the type of superintendent that we needed. And the type of superintendent that I believe will be best for our district now is one that is motivated and has demonstrated competence and enthusiasm for building a strong team, for making sure that our house and what goes on within the district is relational, is high-quality and has the best folks around doing that work. But is, is focused outward, is focused on partnerships, is focused on legislative engagement, is focused at the federal level, is focused on looking to how can we promote and better our school district as it relates to all of the community and, and beyond connections that are needed to, to raise the, the level and the profile of our district even beyond where it is with our leading NAEP scores and, and other things I could brag on. And I think that Michael Dunsmore is the candidate who, to me, embodied that drive to look externally. He has a background in juvenile justice and in counseling. His, his board actually, and, and he was humble. He didn't mention this while he was here, but his board offered him a two-year extension when they found out he was a finalist. I think there's no better compliment that a board can give their superintendent. He had a, a very clear and direct answer to why he would be able to come from a district of 20,000 into a district of 128,000. He's, he's actually made a 10x jump before. This would be less than that. And his experience in smaller districts means that he has served in, as Director of Operations while he was Director of Academics, while he was Director of most other departments and, and districts. So he certainly has the internal handled. But with the state and federal advocacy, he serves on a national advisory board. He regularly visits Washington. He has connections nationally through his military families and, and other connectivity. He's reached out to legislators and to business leaders and to others and he has them regularly tour his buildings. And has been very successful in advocacy efforts for appropriations, for other improvements to the district and has leveraged federal and state opportunities to do things differently and creatively within his district. And so while I think we had three and really looking back five tremendous candidates who all could have come in and, and served our district, I believe, and, and had their unique talents applied here. I, I feel as if we need a superintendent who is focused outwardly and who can assist us in building relationships that will not only secure and solidify what we've been able to do internally as a district but will help us with some of the external threats that we see. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I weighed heavily in my decision who I would support based on the focus groups and people in the community who they were impressed with. I think it's important that the next superintendent not only know how to do the things well that we do today but also knows how to do the things that we need to start doing and do tomorrow. We do have significant issues with our infrastructure. We have issues with revenue. And again, let me say this, I agree with Board Member Smith-Warez. All of the candidates were very gifted, very talented. I would imagine all of them could work in our school system in some way and be productive. And I enjoy meeting each and every one of them. But today I'll be supporting Dr. Green because I think her experience is most applicable to where we are today and where we need to go as a school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Couch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This process has been well played out. I think we've taken our time and we've gotten some great candidates to fill some very big shoes from an extremely talented and wonderful superintendent, Dr. Patricia Willis. We have challenges ahead of us. We have financial challenges that we are facing. We have legislative challenges that we will face. And a lot of those legislative challenges really pertain to Florida. When we listened to the, the community stakeholders, they were clear, they wanted someone with experience, someone who'd worked in turnaround work that knew the landscape of what we face here in Duval County. And I think it was clear through this process, like I said, we had wonderful candidates, but the clear frontrunner for me that I think can lead us into the next phase of our district, we've had a lot of reform. We've, we've had some challenges with finances due to a 47 cent increase per student and we're going to need someone that can be the steady hand to work through that next phase of implementation of everything and keeping things going that we have endured over the last few years. And so for me, that person is Dr. Diana Green.
Thanks, Chair Hershey.
I would also like to thank HYA for bringing us an excellent slate of candidates. You all certainly found candidates who are capable of, of leading the district and it made this process, while exciting, difficult and challenging. However, I too, similar to Board Member Shine, as he mentioned, relied a lot on conversations that we had had when we went and listened to communities at the different community meetings as well as people who participated in the focus groups. And as I read through those sheets of paper, the one thing that was interesting to me that there was one candidate that everyone seemed to make similar comments about and seemed to favor a little bit more. And I'd just like to share with you some of the accomplishments of this candidate. This candidate created a new revenue stream for their district in an effort to increase teacher pay, has demonstrated an innovative approach to instruction specifically in ESE with an android named Milo. This candidate has knowledge of the current legislative state in Florida and has engaged actively in that process. This candidate has served as a bridge between the school district and the current, current community in which they serve. It is for these reasons that I support Dr. Green as the next superintendent. It is for these reasons that I support Dr. Green as the next superintendent.
Thank you. Board Member X.
I want to thank Hazard, Young, and Attia, the dynamic duo who kept us informed on this process all along and the outstanding work that you did, and I want to condemn you for making this decision so difficult. You brought us excellent candidates, and those five semi-finalists, there was not much difference. I mean, it was tough, really tough. And I've struggled with this decision, and I think the one thing that stands out to me as a relatively new board member, and recognizing the many challenges, both financial and politically, that we face in this district, that the work that Dr. Green has done in Manatee and having a half penny sales tax increase and a mill increase in a three-year period by the voters, I think is outstanding. When you look at the challenges with Duval County, having the older schools in the state of Florida, more schools over 50 years older, when you look at teacher pay, Manatee County next year will have the highest starting salary for incoming teachers at $46,000, going from $38,000. And our most valuable asset that we have as a district is our teachers. You know, they're on the front lines dealing every day with our students. And the work that she's done in some of the challenged schools, I think is commendable. And so my recommendation would be Dr. Diana Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mrs. Grimes?
So, some of you know I've been around the block a few times and have seen several superintendent searches. I also have to say that this probably has been the best, well, not probably, it has been the best. And I do thank you, Madam Chairman and Vice Chair. But I, and we did have excellent candidates. At one point, I wondered if we would get anybody, but we did, and they were all very, very excited about joining us. But I also believe that Dr. Green is the person for us. She has done some amazing things. She's bold. She's not afraid of doing the things she needs to do. She's done wonderful work in Manatee. And it was interesting that a lot of the focus group participants, she was their first candidate, and some of the things that people wrote were, she's not only qualified, she's prepared. And she told us, she said, I will have a very short, what'd she say? Learning curve. Obviously, she knows the state, which is a real asset. And people considered her to be proactive. Her resume with partnerships is just outstanding, which is something that we need in Duval County. And she's also very versed in the financial aspect of the school board. So I believe she, that we collectively will make a very good team with her, and am very excited to have someone like her to lead Duval County.
Thank you, Mrs. Grimes. In some ways, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but it's been a long process. It's been a challenging process to ensure that we were all at the table, that we involved every stakeholder group, and we couldn't have done that if we had not worked as a team. This was a team effort of board members centered on a focus of selecting not just a person who is qualified and experienced according to our leadership profile adopted, that, and all of the stakeholder groups agreed and asked that this board bring the next superintendent who was experienced in the seat of superintendency, but also understood what we're facing as a district in Florida, but was also bold, courageous, and willing to do the type of work that will continue our progressive steps while at the same time helping us to meet the challenges ahead. The person that I am supporting tonight is Dr. Diana Green because of her exceptional instructional design expertise and her ability to recognize and evaluate high-quality instruction, the core of what we do. Another strong point for me was the fact that understanding that retention of teachers is vital to the success of our students. She went on a mission for a one-mill referendum and focused part of those dollars to provide the teachers in Manatee County additional pay so that they could compete with surrounding counties. So teachers are our core because they help us to connect the learning with our students. So I also appreciated her demonstrated ability to mobilize a community to focus on educational excellence for all students to ensure their successful preparation for college, career, and life. So Dr. Diana Green is who I will support.
Thank you. Chairperson Wright, I believe it would be appropriate for you to entertain a motion on Diana Green to enter into contract negotiations as preferred candidate.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would offer the motion, I would move that we select by acclamation Dr. Diana Green and offer employment as superintendent of Duval County Public Schools and authorize the Office of General Counsel to negotiate an employment agreement for board approval.
Second. The motion was moved by Board Member Jones and seconded by Board Member Smith-Wares. Any discussion? Hearing none, please register your vote. By your actions, you have unanimously, unanimously moved to select Dr. Diana Green and offer employment as superintendent of Duval County Public Schools and authorize the Office of General Counsel to negotiate an employment agreement for board approval. Is there a motion for adjournment?
It's moved.
Second.
It was moved by Board Member Grimes, seconded by Board Member Couch. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned.